Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the July 26, 2021 Select Board Meeting. We are meeting without Ms. Farrell, who is away for the evening. So it's just John and I and Travis Hearn running the show here. So we're going to start right out of the gate with the CARES Act ARPA programmatic update. But before we do that, and I call up our Information Technology Director Chris Mayo, I'm just wondering if it's too loud at the door as it is? I know the mic's really sensitive on this mobile unit. Okay, so we're going to call up Chris Mayo to update the board on a CARES Act purchase for five media mobile meeting room. Okay, that's not right. I got that wrong. Mobile meeting room, no, units. That was the word I was looking for.
Mobile meeting room.
Thank you.
Yes, so about three or four or two votes approved, five mobile meeting units. They have been installed. They have been used in about four meetings so far. This is the third time we're using it here. We put one over our Council on Aging. We have one at the library. And we have one at 1750, and it was used for parks last week. And we have two here at Town Hall. And so far, they seem to be working very well.
And people, those who are being instructed on the use of the units, they are adapting well?
Well, training will actually begin this week. Training will be library on Wednesday. I did give Mark Frank a five-minute tutorial last week, so we could use it if they wanted to do a hybrid situation. But they'll have more formal training next week as well. Council on Aging, so that's to respond, but they worked for that.
And maybe the most important question for me tonight is when do I have to run that off?
Couple more weeks. We're still, you know, trying to figure out the best placement for it and enhance it.
Let me have some time off in August and then come back refreshed, ready to.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, I don't think we have any questions, but John, I think.
No questions, just comments. It seems to be kind of the standard state-of-the-art material during COVID times or during remote eighty times. It's a really nice piece of equipment. So warranty him, Chris.
One year for TV.
Yeah, so that's pretty standard. But other than that, it seems to be rugged. Caleb will be portable to some extent, and I was at a meeting Wednesday night. And the user handled it pretty well. I didn't hear any difficulties. So we're all, it's a time saver and a nice investment.
If we were to, I think I've already asked this question, but I'll ask it again. If in the future, way down the road, and we go back to pre-COVID times with remote participation, if we were to adopt remote participation in that hypothetical situation, does this allow us the technology that we would need to offer remote, so the form could be with a board or committee member remote? We could show evidence if we had a hearing, we could fully participate. Does that have the features that we would need in that hypothetical scenario?
I'm not sure I understand what's, John. I mean, if you go back to remote, I mean, you're not going to be meeting in person. So this is going to be used.
Okay. It's such a hypothetical, and it's so far out as a possibility. Let's just move on. All right, that's it, Chris. Thank you very much. So this is 500, what, tonight? 525, I think it is.
I have no idea.
Well more than five hundred.
Once we pass 500, we're out of counting.
I kind of stopped counting after 300, but.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you very much. And Travis, do we have anything in terms of the ARPA programmatic update?
I do, yeah. I have one. So let me just finish that up with, when we were waiting for these to come in, we sent out something to all boards and committees saying, in the moment, you need to choose between in-person or remote, because we didn't really have the capacity to be doing hybrid. Once Chris says it's up and running, people have been trained on it, we'll sort of have the ability to offer hybrid more. And then we'll follow up with the clerk's office, most likely, to all boards and committees once these are fully implemented throughout town. On the ARPA programmatic update, which we also have Chief Cassidy here, if anybody has questions specific to him, we are planning an open session meeting of the ARPA steering group for Monday, August 9th at 12:00 p.m. noon. Obviously, we would record that and then make that available on the website. So at the moment, all of the initial requests for ARPA funding that went onto all boards, committees, departments, and organizations in town ask that people get their requests in by August 2nd. So this would allow essentially the group to look at all those requests over the course of the week and then have a meeting available to the public, not for open meeting law, you know, legal purposes, but more for just transparency of sort of going through the discussions that they would have. All these requests on August 9th at 12:00 p.m., which we would then again make available on the website. Chief Cassidy and I have also discussed between now and August 2nd, you know, just putting together a video of how to approach the ARPA request form. It's a very simple form, but it is also, you know, just to add a little context if anybody has any questions. And we will try to do that most likely tomorrow. I'll get that up on the website. There is a website. If you go to the town webpage, just let me pull that up. You can now pull up the ARPA page, and you can find the form. I'll do that right now. And here we are at the main page. This is under Boards, Committees. It is technically not a committee, but that's the best place to group it, ARPA Steering. If you go over here to the ARPA Funding Request Flowchart, which we showed at our meeting last week, here is the request, or excuse me, the flowchart that we talked about last week. So if you're making a request and you are a board or committee, you are under a board or committee, it would be requiring a vote of that board or committee. So there's quite a few meetings set up between now and August 2nd. If you're an organization and you're not under a board or committee, obviously, that's not applicable. And you can just go right to the ARPA request form. And I think what happens every time I open this up while I'm on Zoom does not pull up. But you can, this is, the link is enabled through this on the website. This will pull up the form, and we did show that previously. So that's what Chief Cassidy is going to walk people through, how to approach the form. But other than that, that form is available on the webpage now. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Travis?
Yeah, a few. Travis, the CARE snapshot you gave us in our packet includes a negative number still. How is that going to get from the number?
So that's the.
Six grand.
Yeah, I'm thinking 6,000 compared to some of the, what we've put in there for an allocation versus actual is going to, well, clean that up.
Get that on your site. You have it on your site, so if we have time to do it, I know that. Earlier today, I see Cindy on the call. I said, we convened a meeting in the steering group. And one of the questions I asked the schools was whether or not any of the CARES Act services that schools were using were expected to move into the ARPA world, and the answer was no. So they asked a question here if any of the CARES Act services that are non-school within this program expected to move into ARPA. There are, which aren't. We could probably use you at the table. If it's as simple, I don't know. I was, not a Travis question. I'm just curious if we've identified what those services will be recurring July, sorry, January.
Absolutely. So very off the cuff here, I would think that some of our remote meeting participation support, because the CARES needs to be used by the end of October. So the extension for allowing hybrids, such as what we're doing right now with Zoom, goes through April. So certainly, that would be consistent with the insurance fund, with treasury. And depending on how variance are going, how different town departments and buildings are feeling, whether we're going to extend, and it's outside of the public buildings beyond October, which is currently off the next three years.
So there are some elements that will move those. So in that case, who will be putting forward those ARPA requests when they come through? You.
Some kind of issue.
Okay. And expect to see that emerge on the tracking.
I would think the Emergency Management Director for the two towns would still be, the high-touch cleaning would still be Chief Cassidy. I think, you know, I think we've discussed in multiple, and some of them made it into the budget, right? The IT support that had originally come in through CARES is in the FY '22 budget. I think we're ready to go. If we need to ramp it up because of anything COVID-specific, we would have that capacity through ARPA. But some of the votes and the allocation that we showed last week included projections of those costs through October.
And the next point is not really a question, but rather a remark. And I think as people see the website and the open for business for ARPA piece posted, this is my comment, no one else's. I would hope that individuals that are making application for these funds not check every box with the hope that it just magically happens. There's going to be a screening that goes on. The task involves mostly volunteers or people who are going to be doing their best to match the requests with the available funding as defined in the initial rule of the grant. So it asks people, as they're filling out the applications, be true to that. Make it sensible, make it applicable, and stick to the rules, if you will. It'll make things go a little smoother on the back end. Nobody wants to say no, so it'll make it difficult to help. But as this program opens, especially to areas of government that have not been heard from to date, we're here to help them with technical assistance, but would ask people to be true to that application. So more of an editorial, so.
Absolutely. And I think we're very intent on making sure that our community recovers from the impact of the pandemic. And if ARPA isn't the right fit, we have a lot of people from multiple sectors. So we may be able to find them to a different funding source and still help them achieve their vision. But it just may not be with the ARPA funds moving soon.
Sure. I actually have two comments, questions for you. Are you seeing, like, in the responses that are coming in through the form, are you seeing a robust varied response or varied number of requests? Because I'm finding in conversations with individuals who are either in town government or in Town Hall, so to speak, or extension, or on a board or a committee, I'm still finding people don't have a strong understanding of what ARPA is, but then more importantly, what the eligible expenses are. So I am finding I'm having a repeat conversation over what ARPA is. It catches me by surprise, because I would think that if I'm in a position to know what it is, they would also be in a position to know what it is. And then that makes me realize, no, that's not actually too much, I'm just making that assumption. So are you seeing a robust varied number of response types of responses or requests coming in? Or is it a rather narrow?
No, right now, it is very narrow. And it is people who are sort of in the inner circle of having been focused on pandemic response in the last eighteen months, and therefore are projecting what potential projects could be moving forward. It's been discussed at departmental meetings. It's gone out through the email, multiple emails. I think the video that the town administrator and I recorded may help. And hearing that feedback is good, because we can make sure that perhaps delve a little bit deeper into what are eligible projects, and specifically call that out in our explanation that we proposed. But what I've been hearing is a lot of people are working on their proposal and planning their aim by August 2nd, but they're right now being made late by that need for a vote of a board or committee if it's a municipal entity.
Okay, because I'm absolutely hearing hesitancy that something may be an eligible expense.
And anytime we have somebody that feels that hesitancy, we encourage them to apply and let us make that determination. But we can never say yes if they don't apply. And so our advice would be put it through. And again, if ARPA's not fit, not the right fit, we hope to be able to point them in the direction of our potential application.
Do you see a point in time where August 2nd is coming on? I know there'll be another round where you're reaching back out to the community. But do you see a point in time where you are reaching out, that the members of the steering group are on the phone, are sending out emails to say, hey, look, you know, we've just been through our first round. Surprise, I didn't hear from you.
Right, so.
Are we doing any kind of outreach?
So one of the charges of the members of the steering group is to network with their professional networks. And there are a lot of best practices which are being bandied about on listservs and other newsletters. And so it's really early in terms of the implementation of this. So some of those great ideas may not be coming to our individual attention for 60 or 90 days, at which point we can reach out. And as we mentioned last week, if there's a great idea, and I know you would, you might be one over the weekend, the key with.
It's an idea.
The key with a good idea is, in order for it to work, we need a champion who's going to be implemented. So just because we hear through our listserv or newsletter or some blog post or something that it's a really good idea, we need to identify a champion in town who can influence it and not just saddle existing people with additional responsibilities, if that's not really the good fit for them.
Okay. And your comment there about early days, that is absolutely what I'm hearing at forums like the Metro West Regional Collaborative, the Massachusetts Municipal Association of Public Policy Committee. Anytime I'm sitting in on one of those meetings, I'm really getting the sense that we are out in front of this. So kudos to those who are guiding the steering group, because I think Holliston may be somewhat unique and proactive with it.
Hopefully, other communities will be looking to us as a touchstone by which they measure projects that they consider.
Yeah, right. Okay. And then because it hasn't been brought up, and because these ideas have already been championed, I'm going to say, have we heard anything about rent and mortgage relief continuing? And have we heard anything about the liquor license fee relief that we offered for 2020, 2021?
I've looked at it.
So rent and mortgage relief would most logically come through Youth and Family Services. And I know they have a bunch of different things that they were considering. And they came to have a vote before it was put in.
Yes.
With regards to additional relief for license fee, license holders, that would be something that if that's what the board is interested in, we can put a placeholder in. There were some things that came out of our conversations last week that I then completed the form, just to put a placeholder and put it in the queue. So if that's something that you want us to submit, give the town administrator, I could put that in just so it's out there and in the front row.
So we would need a board vote for that, to do that. So we'll wait till then it's back and maybe bring it up. Either, yeah, maybe you see it as an.
Did you talk about the rent portion?
No, I'm talking about the license, liquor license fee relief.
Yeah, so we have some time on that, especially because of the time. Those obviously go through the Select Board Town Administrator Office, so I think we can look at that.
Yeah, okay. All right. And we see that as an agenda item under, no, just bring it up under an ARPA programmatic update. Okay, all right.
And I think, you know, Youth and Family Services is one of the groups I'm aware of that will be meeting.
Yeah.
I've talked to the COA and some other groups as well, who all have meetings scheduled between now and August 2nd to get that vote from the whole group on some of their positive and discussing internal.
Okay, good, John.
Just a feedback one you would talk about would be the iteration, if you will, of the steering group. It's a three-year charge at least while ARPA's in play. And I would expect certainly by the end of the first year, the group, the steering group is going to become much more of a push group. We're going to be reaching out, as the chief said, to other stakeholders in the other community to say, hey, you know, so-and-so is doing this. And so I think by year three, it's going to be a very back-and-forth group and make sure that there's wide communication between opportunities and stakeholders. So it will pivot probably within a half a year, two years, I would think, with the thing, with the name really evolve. And one more thing, Chief, with your permission, I wanted to bring this up to you, if you'd give me just a quick step back to the CARES piece that the chief did. He, as many people know, he writes an email to us once a week on the community risk designation. If you don't mind, Chief, I'm going to read this last paragraph, because I think while Holliston's in good shape with regard to vaccination, this is still a good message. And you frequently bring information from national public health sources into our dialogue, which I agree. But you wrote, "More and more evidence shows that family and friends are the most powerful motivator for vaccine acceptance." A report found 17% of all previously vaccine hesitant were persuaded to get vaccinated by a family member. 10%, they were persuaded by their own healthcare provider. 5% said they were persuaded by a close friend, coworker, or classmate. It can help inform our public messaging. It does not appear government officials are influencers of those characterized as vaccine hesitant. So while early on, we were talking about a three-pronged approach to public messaging on COVID and safe distancing and so forth, social distancing, it does appear as though the family-to-friend communication vaccine is the way to close that gap. As I mentioned, your report indicated 82% of Holliston is partially vaccinated. 77% is, 77% is fully vaccinated. So our numbers are strong, but very, very important compelling message that I just want to read, because I love it.
I think we have to hang our hand in the living there.
So nice stat. And again, when you talk about the percentages that have even a partial, remember that's 100% of the population. We have previously calculated that full eligible population is in the mid-eighties. So we're really just a few percentage points between where we are and what are currently eligible before the next EUA comes out for the up to 12, the 212. So we're in good shape. But yeah, please do your best to communicate to your family and friends, because that's going to be the difference.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, so unless there's somebody on the Zoom call or anybody in the room who would like to make a comment under the CARES Act and ARPA programmatic update on to the boards, and I don't see any hands up. So John, if you have any ones to present to me.
We have a A warrant. It's only $311,961.41. I'll make a motion to.
Second, I'll favor.
I.
That cares. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. John?
Two items, Tina. I'll have the third bring in under open comment. So first, just to alert, we will hopefully have in front of us next week, member or members of the Celebrated Holliston Committee who have been in touch with us regarding planning for Holliston's 300th anniversary coming up in 2024. The group apparently has had some charge relevant to the 275th anniversary and the projected 300th. So looking through Travis, I expect we'll see Peter Barberi and perhaps others from that committee before us about their preliminary plans, their thoughts, their fundraising goals, to initiate something that I think this board shows some interest in. So that would be next week.
Are they coming to the board to inform us or to have questions or sort of both, do you think?
I would imagine it's a bit of both. They, Peter explained that when they were formed back in the early 90s, there was some Select Board charge that envisioned that they would have a sustainable interest in helping the community reach its 300th and carry on some of the work they do organizing, fundraising, coordination, and the efforts to pull off something that's big. So I think we'll hear about that, and maybe some questions from us too.
Okay.
As far as I know. Second item, just want to give folks a brief update. I touched base with Sean Reese today. There's a lot going on in the public works world. Last week, we showed pictures that I think Travis had put up on our web about the water treatment plant that's going up, still on target to open summer of 2022. He wanted to bring up some activities associated with staffing. The Assistant TPW Director position is close to being posted. It's this one. Sorry?
Coming up in early hours.
Yep. His crew chiefs interviews are going on. He's got some good candidates. He'll be posting for a form for the water treatment plant, which is a hard-to-find job, but he's got some good candidates. I'm sure you'll bring it up under your Administrator Updates. But this morning, they opened up the RFR for the DPW study. So I'm going to bring that up when that go. Winter Street Project is on time, just wrapping up, I think, by the end of August, if I'm not mistaken. He's also looking at enhancing snow and ice operations using a brine or pretreatment solution. It may require specialized equipment. And I know he's talked to Travis, so it's a dialogue that I think is interesting and creative, and we do encourage those things. So overall, he said they're very busy. It's been a very busy summer, and his activities show that. I want to bring up last thing.
Is it this seat?
Sure. Thank you.
All right, so I only have, I have three updates. We, Travis and I met with Representative Dykma last week. I think we have these calls periodically. It was my first call as a chair, but John, I know you have had a call or two with her, and we've been priorities, so I'm sure as well. What we discussed in that meeting last week was leveraging the final Complete Streets and StanTech sidewalks study reports in a fall meeting with Mass DOT. So Representative Dykma, as she always does, offered her support and willingness to reach out on our behalf if necessary to facilitate that meeting. One of the key takeaways that I've tried to impress upon the representative that strikes me from this Complete Streets report and this draft StanTech report are the 1.8 miles of sidewalks that are on Mass DOT-operated roadways, as well as the 23 unique projects identified in the streets, draft prioritization plan that are within Mass DOT-owned roadway. So we have a lot to talk about with Mass DOT. Appreciate the representative's time with us last week, willingness to hear what we had to say. She also provided, Travis, are you going to bring this up under your TA update in terms of the earmark in the approved FY '22 budget? So we have three earmarks that passed through with the FY '22 budget. The first is for, I'm going to get the numbers slightly wrong, I think, but 30,000 for the new Afghan and Iraq Veterans Memorial in Blair Square. So that's a huge benefit for that group that's worked so hard to get that memorial up and running. I think they were pleasantly surprised to have that money earmarked for them. They will be able to do great work. The second earmark is for $100,000 for Goodwill Park improvements with a focus on the bathroom facility, I believe, is sort of the main emphasis. And the third, I'm completely blanking on, so you're going to have to help me, Travis. I think it is the $250,000 for the Metro West, a Metro West regional effort to provide mental health services. Okay, so we've discussed those with Carolyn Dykma last week. The second update is, we had a Metro West Regional Collaborative meeting this past week, and a vote was taken. There'll be no change in the assessment to the town of Holliston to be a member of the Metro West Regional Collaborative. It is a base of 1,500 with 10 cents per capita. So that vote was taken. And the third is next week, August 2nd, we'll have a Traffic Advisory Committee update on the work of the committee since really its inception. There'll be information on spending articles, where we are with the use of the equipment and signage purchased through those spending articles from the town meeting, as well as implementation of Traffic Advisory Committee recommendations. And the update is in compliance with the charge of the Traffic Advisory Committee, which is to periodically update the board. So those are my three comments. Any public comment from anyone in the group or anyone on the Zoom call? All right, so we're going to move into the Assistant Town Administrator HR Search Update. And Travis, can I just lead on this one? So we do not have the candidates that we brought to the meeting two weeks ago for an interview. We have, and we will continue to work hard to find the best candidates. That said, it's not expected that, it's not unexpected, rather, that when we find the best candidate, others find that same candidate very desirable. So there are other communities looking for the same high-quality people that we are looking for. So not being successful in bringing the prior candidate to Holliston is a sign of her strengths as a candidate and a sign of the strength of our search for that candidate. Others saw this strength too, and for that reason, we are not able to bring her to Holliston. Travis, if you have a little bit more to update on that. But I really want to highlight how we'll continue in our search for the very best candidate for this position and others. And unfortunately, that may mean we're here in a similar position in the future where we are in competition with other communities for those same candidates.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great point. And I would just sort of echo, you know, not in this particular search, but we are seeing it elsewhere. We're, you know, we've lost a couple of people in Town Hall recently to other towns. There's a lot of people looking out there for various positions. And we're going to find ourselves in these instances. So obviously, we were happy with that candidate, and now we need to go about finding another one. So I think where we are at the moment, unfortunately, is going to be to repost. But again, you know, based on the initial response that we got the last time we posted, we're hoping that we will get the same, so we'll use the same platform, which is the MMA. And we will encourage anybody who felt that they were shrunk handed the first time to reapply, but also hopefully see the same response or even greater that we got last time. And we will, if we can, cast an even wider net. But so that is the plan moving forward, is to repost this position. I did share with the board sort of some adjustments that I'm hoping to make that will, you know, put us in position if we need to act very quickly to make the board comfortable in doing so. And, you know, we may want to wait for Ben to be here just to round out that conversation. But obviously, I can answer any questions that the board may have on that. But so in that reposting, I would say, you know, we're looking at most likely that hitting, giving at least two to three weeks for responses. Again, is going to put us at the end of August potentially. It's a busy time. At the same point, this is something that, you know, is a priority of the board that has been expressed. And so I think we can make the timeline work, and that won't be problematic. And the last thing I was going to touch on in this conversation is going to be the physical space that we're looking to carve out for HR. But I'll pause there if there's anything the board wants to discuss first.
I have a question, John.
Is this regarding the ATA?
Yes.
No, I mean, we're sad to see the candidate not get locked down, but we've got to pick ourselves up, move back forward into the market, find somebody who's a good match. Holliston's a great place to work. We've proven that. And we'll find the right person. And looking forward to it. It's a very important hire. Probably one of the more important hires we'll make on this board in a long time. So look forward to it.
Travis, when you mentioned the end of August, is that when you would see the board being presented with candidates for review? Or do you see that as closing of the posting and the review process starting at that point?
If we repost this week, which is the intention, and give until mid-August If we repost this week, which is the intention, um and give um until mid-August for responses, um I would look to do the same thing. I thought the um hiring screening committee was very effective. They did an excellent job. Um, and so I would also give them the opportunity to to go through the same process that we went through. Um, and then you, my work between that period and bringing somebody forward to the board, whether it be one person or multiple, um, would probably not have somebody in front of you until early September potentially.
Okay. You do not see any changes to the posting?
I think the posting was effective. I think the job description got us the candidates we were looking for. It certainly, we certainly saw the split, um, which is a difficult split to 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 sort of determine what the best fit for the town is, but it is either the applicants we saw had a very strong HR background, including HR directors from other towns. And then some of them had a much stronger sort of ATA intangibles background that we had to project to be able to do the HR role. Um, those were, you know, I would probably be able to separate all of the respondents into those two categories that we brought to the steering committee or the screening committee, excuse me. Um, and I would expect to see the same thing.
That's a function of the work that the screening committee did, that they brought forward candidates that certainly were able to see both those with the strong HR and those with the stronger ATA. So my feedback would be is that they can continue, if they can repeat that, bring forward candidates that are strong in both areas. I think that's it. Made us getting to the prior candidate strong, you know, as as strong as it was. So if they can continue to do that this next round, I think that's my mind.
Um, and so I would round it out um with a conversation that I I know I've had a few discussions with. Um, I don't know the final uh best solution for the town, but I think we've we've provided ourselves a little bit of flexibility here, which is the physical space for an HR function that's never really existed, you know, by itself in Town Hall before. Um, does not have an evidence place to place it. Um, and so what we've done is revitalize through the facilities manager um the space upstairs, which was formerly the sewer office at a time where the town had a sewer office. Um, and I can show uh people at home what that will look like. Um, so let me just pull that up. And then I just wanted to get some sort of feedback from the board on a couple of options that we've come up with. Um, and so here it is. Uh, this will start over from the beginning. So if you are in the upper Town Hall, right, we're all sort of familiar with that. By the way, here are the new floors.
I was just gonna say, no, it's not your.
Uh, these are not the new floors, right? Uh, and these are slightly uneven floors, well, for the project area. This room at the moment is certainly big enough for an office of one. Um, and so let me just play it one more time. And then this, those are the new floors. It'll be built. Um. And so if you want, you can access it through all the Town Hall, the floor, the other floors. And then you can also access it from under the stairs if you want. And then this is the size of the room, that's that could be a new wall. So what the conversation has been on is, does it make sense, as this is an ATA treasurer director role, to have that new person sit up there in this new office space formerly in the sewer office? Does it make sense to move my my position, Town Administrator, up there, have the ATA treasurer director take that office space so that as you enter the select board slash Town Administrator office in Town Hall, you're accessing either the TA or the ATA? Um, so those are two options, right? And then the other option that came up, which I think is one that may work, but impacts, you know, uh outside of just the TA and ATA offices, which would be that the function of what we call the pinecrest room, but is the downstairs conference room, to replace that functionality with the room that we've now carved out upstairs. And then turn that into essentially office space enough for two people, which is the two HR functions we we now have. So at the December twenty twenty Town Meeting, we repurposed the position of the Treasury Director's Office to the HR Benefit Specialist. That has been an excellent change in Town Hall, um and and she has done a phenomenal job and and really helped us in this transition towards an HR function. So right now, because she's situated in the Treasury Director's Office, there is no room to close a door for an HR function, which is difficult, and ends up being that this room gets used for closed-door meetings or downstairs um throughout the day. That would then also be able to carve out two office spaces, which would be the HR Director and the HR Benefit Specialist. But we would lose the functionality of that being a second conference room in Town Hall to this room. Upper Town Hall is obviously the largest function area that we have um of of all of our town spaces. Um, but is really, you know, once the septic is replaced, always generally allowed to be accessed by anybody looking for it as a function. Um, and so we really, when it becomes, you know, town staff looking for conference space, this room that we're in right now and the downstairs conference room really are the go-to because Upper Town Hall is not generally used for that function when Upper Town Hall is available to the public. So with that, um, those are the three options essentially, and I'd be open to any feedback, but obviously from the board.
Hi, I've said from the beginning, you're the Town Administrator. He uses spaces, you deem most efficient, most purposeful. No doubt we're running into some uh capacity issues. The only real relief, and it's not a lot left, is seventeen fifty. A lot will shake out over the next several years, hopefully with some consolidation, DPW, things like that. But for now, whatever makes sense from your perspective is fine, I mean.
Um, I have a couple of comments. I agree wholeheartedly with John, however, that in the end, it's it's your decision to make. Um, because you know how Town Hall functions day to day and knowing what needs to get done. Um, I will say that I was, I remember the um prior candidate ATA candidate saying that she likes desk touches. That, and I thought that that was a excellent way to describe a key function of someone who's in the ATA position. So putting the ATA up on the second, third floor, second floor, upstairs, um would sort of limit that. So I, for that reason, I don't love the ATA up there, but I'm never gonna tell you no. Um, and then the hybrid option for meetings makes the need for a big pinecrest room probably less likely, at least for the foreseeable future, because you're not gonna have jam jam packed. I mean, normally we have a full crowd in here for our select one, we need pre-COVID. Um, and we're not gonna see that again because people are gonna tune in remotely. So the the need for that large pinecrest room to hold meetings seems less likely in the foreseeable future. So those are my comments, but they're just that.
Those are one from the audience.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, Jay, just your name and your address.
Jay Robinson, two thirty-three Chamberlain Street. So um all that um like finagling to try to find space, is that, any of that um constrained by budget? Like, you know, you know, obviously you're not like, hey, let's go build a montage, but are there economic inhibitors to you solving this problem?
I don't think at this time, I think we were able to to sort of retrofit this room into usable space, whether it be for an office or um other purpose. Um, relatively with facilities, um, you know, leeway at the end of the FY twenty one budget was how we planned that. Um, I don't think we currently have the ability to turn the pinecrest room into two office spaces on the drop of a hat. I think that could be a financial, there could be a financial component there. I think mostly, and I I think um Mr. Cronin touched on it a little bit, is is operationally, right? We have capacity for offices. We have one downstairs that's in what I call the bullpen area of the land use departments. Um, but does it make sense to have that as an HR function? Probably not. Seventeen fifty presents us with multiple office spaces, but does it make sense to remove anybody from Town Hall, to put them over there that doesn't impact this operation? I don't think so. That was sort of the exercise we went through. So I think making this room usable is is not a budget buster and was able to be done. I think to expand beyond that, we probably have to have a financial conversation.
Okay, cause now speaking as a citizen, you you know, you you were trying to land a candidate um for another spot. And I think in this market, speed matters, but also, I mean, I think this building is beautiful. But you also wanna like entice a candidate to come work here. So what's their workspace gonna look like? And my experience, not in municipal municipal spaces, that um typically with HR, you have a sectioned off area because of the nature of the records. We don't have the constraints of like GDPR and European labor laws, but you know, California and Massachusetts, labor laws are not getting, there's not less compliance, there's more. So speaking as a citizen, not as a finance committee member, I would wanna know that if, you know, we're trying to make investments in the staff and and um part of the staff is that they need proper tools and workspace to do their job. And if you wanna get good candidates, like what candidate is gonna wanna work in a closet? So that's if if it becomes a a financial constraint, I would then suggest as a finance committee member that you bring it to to us also.
You know, if I could just jump in for a quick second, cause I I know where you're going, I shouldn't say I know where you're going. I think I know where some of the conversational mindset is because what we learned a lot in COVID is the workplace has changed a lot.
Yep.
Um, certainly the private sector will always beat the public sector to the punch with these things, but we hear about how the modern workplace is changing, it's becoming smaller, um, less ownership, people working more from home.
Yeah.
I don't think any of that's gonna change, but over the next several years, as those realities creep into the public sector, and that's usually what the lag is, Jay.
Yeah.
You might see some of that flexibility too, but for now, what we're trying to do is make public employees come to work here every day to serve the public's needs. Will our technology and our evolving workplace catch up with the needs, maybe do that part-time, or with muscle and structural space? I'd be interested to see how that plays out as well. Things are always changing.
I think some roles though, like you're gonna see a rebound back. I think some roles, like I support HR at my company, and there are some individuals, like some functions that, you know, can be done remotely, but there are other roles that um in the HR space where FaceTime matters, especially like everyone, you know, most, I think, Holliston employees come to come to work in Holliston. I I agree, like there may be some roles in the future where they'll lend themselves to hybrid. But to me, if you're going through and hiring this resource, especially when they first hit the ground, considering their space, HR, they're gonna have to be seen, not just over a screen. And so I'm more concerned that you missed out on a strong candidate, and I think that speed counts when you're trying to get that candidate in a competitive market. But the other side of it is like, to land a candidate, do they have a good, you know, good workspace, what equipment do they use? As as John said, what are their, what are their options? Like, I think I said that that's ninety-five, or do they have some leverage? But I don't see how they do that job uh remotely, at least in the near term.
Yeah, and I think so, I I would just say to to uh the Chair's question as well, on on, does it make sense to have them up there um or the TA up there, right? Is that both the downstairs conference room and this upstairs room that we're carving out, you can access via the front or back door and go essentially directly there for confidential type activities that you want with an HR. And that's why, you know, they, it became a viable option either way. Um, and I will obviously keep everybody updated on any changes here, but the the idea was we certainly need more usable space in this building um the way that we are, and that some of the solutions that we may see if we go to a consolidated DPW facility in the next few years, um, you know, that a water department may move there or something like that, that would free up space are just not, you know, in in this conversation at the moment.
For sure, we're identifying that space for future hires is important. And um Jay, you make a really good point about bringing in new hires, top quality new hires with attractive spaces that they can work in and that they can see when they come to the Town Hall also for their interviews. So I I think that's a really good point. So it's, I think, great that we have a space that we are improving, and these thoughts are going on. Um, for this next round of interviews, we'll have something to show for that that interview of that that top candidate that we get in the board, so.
Excellent. And then so I'll keep you updated, um but at this moment, we're looking to repost as soon as possible.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna close out then uh the conversation on Assistant Town Administrator. I don't see any hands up on the Zoom call. I see one hand up on the Zoom call.
We kept on the audio. I don't know if she wants to speak.
Um, so I'm being told from our IT support here that there's one resident who'd like to speak, and I believe the name is Millie Campersall. So if you hit star six, no, if you unmute yourself on the Zoom call, we should be able to hear you. So I believe on your screen, that's gonna be the bottom right, bottom left rather, the unmute. Alright, Millie, if you did have, oh. One more second there, if anyone wants to speak. I think we have one person by the name of Millie Campersall, who's unmuted and. Can you hear us?
Um, yes, if you wanted me to speak. I really didn't wanna speak. I'm learning this computer, and I wanted to keep my mic off so that you wouldn't hear the background noise and.
Ah, got it.
It's coming through terrible on the TV.
Okay.
So that's why I hooked up to the Zoom, but I didn't mean to raise my hand if I did.
This Campersall will say, congratulations on figuring out how to speak at a Zoom meeting. Good job, and and we'll move on on the agenda. And if you do wanna speak at any point in time, raise your hand, it'll recognize you. So I'm gonna move on. Uh, sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, real quick to her point, I've been getting some texts. There there is poor uh static on the HCAT. Pretty dreadful, actually, so.
Yes, yes. Okay, then they're aware of the issue, and do we need to do something up here, Christian, to improve the quality?
I I I can I can just explain. We're just having, it it um for a while now, we've been having problems with our Verizon feed.
Okay.
With a for with static for about a week or two.
Okay.
Um, we are going to, we are looking into it. We're trying to get Verizon into, look at the equipment and fix the static.
Okay, so there are technical issues beyond the control of HCAT, beyond the control of IT here.
Yeah, it's rapidly gone IT here, so we're going to be going to Verizon and trying to fix it.
Okay, well, if everyone can just bear with us, if you're watching, however you're watching, if your sound quality is not good, it sounds like it's a known issue and that hurts. We're underway to correct it, so I apologize for that.
Stream a sound check.
You can stream a sound check, which, yeah, um.
When you repost, do you pull the audio from the Zoom though, Christian? When you repost, do you pull the audio from the Zoom?
Yes, that's me. We uh, well, we repost on our vivid, on our on-demand website and on our YouTube page. Um, and we take the Zoom.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move on to uh comments from the Town Administrator.
Okay, so uh I believe Mr. Cronin mentioned earlier, the facilities manager, the DPW Director, myself uh looked at the three responses we received with the DPW facility feasibility study. Uh, I was very happy with the responses that we have at this time, um based on two, that in my opinion rose to um the same level of excellence. Uh, the facilities manager will have to do some um some reference checking and those those things. But uh I think, you know, hopefully by next week, we should be able to bring you um contract and get underway with that. Uh, it was uh, again, very good response, the DPW facility feasibility study. For anybody who's not followed along, would be the first step um in identifying a future location potentially of the combined DPW facility, if that's the recommendation of the consultant, um that would do a substantial amount of um some of the planning and and um and recommending work that is necessary to then approach a future Town Meeting about the design engineering of such a facility, which would then lead to most likely um a potential request for the 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 overall funding of the project. So the feasibility study is is essentially step one, and we're excited to get that underway. Um, the responses were open today and were very encouraging.
Let me just pause for one second on that. When we did the Blair Square, when you and Ben opened the Blair Square bids, you had a scoring sheet for the ultimate choice.
Yes, same idea here. It's just under a different procurement law, so we opened that under thirty B. Um, we did a price and a non-price packet, opening them under seven C. We do uh grading, which was done by the facilities manager, myself, and DPW Director, and then when one is selected, the facilities manager will go to that selected choice and work out an agreement that they'll bring to you for execution.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a target for how long this study will take before we have to approve it?
The RFP requested that they give us a timeline under six months, and all of them indicated that it could be done under six months. Um, I think again, through the conversation with them, uh, we can, we'll, we can narrow down that so that when you're signing a contract, it gives you a specific date, and we can discuss whether six months is still viable for us. Um, the only other thing I'll mention uh I have at the moment would be Celebrate Holliston, as Mr. Cronin mentioned, is on eight two uh on our August second agenda, and Miss Heim mentioned, the tack will be on our August second agenda. Additionally, our August second agenda will be the opening of the warrant for the October eighteenth uh fall Town Meeting. Um, so we would have opened that on August second if the board is ready to do so, make that publicly known, do the um the press release for that at the time, and announce the date at which it would be closed, with what we can discuss next week. But will most likely be September twentieth to allow all the time um to do the work, to prepare the the warrant and get that situated. Um, so that will be coming, and so to get ahead of that and to make sure that people are aware, obviously, we now have a five-year capital improvement plan that's posted to the website. At the same point, we understand that sometimes capital issues force their head, force their hand on us, uh force our hand, excuse me. And so I will send out the five-year CIP request form again to all boards and committees to make sure that people are aware. Um, if somebody has an issue, that they need to be on our radar. Um, but after that, I mean, there's quite a few things that we've been tracking along the way from May till now. So, you know, the board can really, once the warrant's open, begin discussing any of those things as we have. Um, you know, we're we're looking at a schedule here. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at a schedule here. Um, it's going to be, you know, pretty aggressive as we get into September. Uh, September's going to be a very busy month for us. Um, and, and we'll try to get some of the things, you know, the STANTEX studies and those things out of the way in August if we can. So we're prepared to go directly into warrant mode in September.
Okay, you brought it up. I was going to say for other business, but in terms of schedules, um, I, looking at the week of September sixth, seventh, it is Labor Day, followed by one of Jewish holidays. Looking to remove that week for the term, so no meeting that.
You know what? I think we had posted it without, I think we had removed it, and I think I didn't catch that.
Okay.
Without the seventh was an issue as well.
Okay, so the board will not be re-leading the week of Labor Day Monday.
So I would say at that point, if, if the warrant is going to close two weeks later, which is September twentieth, uh, and again, we can discuss next week, that September thirteenth would probably be the time at which the select board will want to look at sort of all the capital review, uh, capital items that may be, uh, teed up for the warrant. But really between August second and September twentieth, you know, I, I may just try to spin in what we can about that last week in August. Um, and so, you know, we can work around that. But, uh, you know, it feels like we have some time here, but we're certainly going to get into September and, and feel very rushed very quickly. But that's all I have under comments in the town administration.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for the town administrator? So seeing none, we will move on to board business. I think we have some minutes to approve, and a draw a line.
Big motion to, to meeting, that's in June twenty-eight, twenty-two.
Second, in all favor, aye, who that carries? And then we have a widening of a driveway at the address of three fourteen Corwin Drive. So their request is to widen it to twenty feet. The DPW director went out and visited the site and has no issues. So unless there's any comment here tonight or comment from the board, we're looking to approve the widening to twenty feet of the driveway at three fourteen Corwin Drive.
Make a motion to that, sir.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have an EMT appointment, and I'm just going to pull this one up. As it turns out, I have a special request that the board unanimously approved this candidate. Um, she is well-known and loved. Her brother sends a, a special request for prompt approval of this kid. This, um, candidate for an on-call EMT, Sophia LaRico of Morton Street here in Holliston. And the request is that she be appointed as an on-call emergency medical technician for the department. She recently obtained her EMT certification and is looking for pre-hospital experiences as she pursue, pursues, excuse me, undergraduate studies in nursing. So with that, um, strong endorsement from her brother and her brother's good friend, my son, um, we have a recommendation.
Okay, make a motion to appoint Sophia LaRico at Morton Street as an on-call emergency medical technician for the department.
Yes, we second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Anthony, this is done. Um, now we're going to move on to other business. John?
Uh, last Wednesday night, I was, um, asked to meet with the Parks and Rec, uh, department. Met with a full group of recreational, uh, parks recreation staff and touched on a host of different things. But primary topic was to address some longstanding issues associated with park maintenance management. Um, about three years ago, I had conversations with a similar group, over at least three new faces last Wednesday, about evaluating the possibility of decoupling the work of maintaining our parks from, from this group and moving it in the direction perhaps of public works. Uh, for a variety of reasons that had no traction, but now it does. And I think it could be primarily put into two areas. Parks and Rec's done a lot of work in the last several years to try and put their hands around the state of fields in our community. Folks of whom should understand this excludes the schools, which school fields are the domain of schools. Um, Parks and Rec have done, uh, master study. They have deals, Thomas produce a product that showed to some extent, um, the types of investments the town have to look at by field over the next several years to address drainage, reconfiguration, usage, parking and so forth. They also had, um, a survey, which I think was overwhelmingly in support of rehabilitating our fields. Um, so with that ammunition, I came to the table asking them, do they, do they want to continue, uh, working in this model? Um, or do they want to envision something different? Um, so apparently after my departure, they voted to enter into a conversation with the town through, uh, our town administrator, our Department of Public Works and Facility Maintenance to examine areas to, uh, move away from parks and into those other areas, which could provide year-round planning, resources, um, and, um, effort to maintain our fields at a level that I think the citizens expect. Um, you know, I, I have such high admiration for, uh, the Parks and Rec people. They do a tremendous job. My colleagues on that board, who I about to become a partner with, um, I don't think a lot of them signed up to take care of fields. Um, and I feel their pain. Um, but I think they struggle mightily with the need to show citizens in Holliston how much it can be better, and they want to be part of that. So for the next several weeks through the town administrator, we're going to start with an internal dialogue about the concept. What does this mean structurally? Where would you put certain roles and responsibilities? And then start building out the concept to the point where it would likely mean a request for additional resources, likely operational resources. And at that point, we'll engage, um, the finance committee liaison, um, and, uh, obviously the Parks and Rec people as well, to see if we can breathe life into an idea that helps Holliston reorganize itself in a way that replicates what many other communities, um, in our surrounding area do to allow people with, um, a public works background to maintain our parks. Facility maintenance, um, experts to maintain the structures on those fields and allows, uh, the current Parks and Rec people to get into the business of recreation management, which they do so so well. So it was a very positive meeting. I want to thank, um, my colleagues on that board a lot. I have a high amount of respect for all of them. They were very interested in working with us. And honestly, Tina, that's, um, when we sign up for this job, we want to be able to work collaboratively with our peers, uh, time in and time out. And, um, they were a pleasure to work with. So I want to thank them again. Excuse me for their time, and I look forward to reporting back to the board in the coming weeks on how things are progressing.
So I have a comment on that, and it's really directed more to Travis. You have mentioned that you're working on a draft job posting for the DPW Deputy Director.
Deputy DPW Director.
Yes. And so, I'm actually reading your email. It says DPW Deputy Director or something.
I'll get you.
What I was going to say is that, uh, is this something that ought to be added to the posting or not yet because it's still being fleshed out as a concept? So I, I'm quickly trying to pull it up to see Travis if there's any mention of, um, I see grounds maintenance.
Yeah, I think it goes under the conversation of grounds maintenance, to be honest. And I don't want to get too far out of the conversation. But I, I think you can look at the org chart of DPW and see that, you know, where we're staffed up in, in certain areas of, of operations of DPW, we're not staffed up on grounds specifically.
Okay. Okay.
And so I, I think that the job description can cover what we're talking about.
Great.
Um, but I think also this is a person who is going to be very important in advancing the discussion and, and helping us achieve something new operationally.
Okay.
Um, I don't want to cloud, cloud the issue either further, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't cast a knife towards the trails and the trail and what we can do to optimize the same model for maintenance of that property. Um, perhaps we can talk to the volunteers and group, um, rail trails group about their interest in bringing the whole picture to focus.
I think you'll find a captain on this, interested individuals over there on the.
Yeah, you know what? And, and look, um, this is me speaking now, not, not anyone else. But I said to the board, to the people folks last week, anyway you slice this pie, you know, where the rules end up. Holliston has a reckoning coming, like so many things. Uh, we've deferred so much, uh, with regard to infrastructure. This is just another perfect example of it. There are generations of, of, of people that live in our town, both young and old, that have used the parks. Um, and time and time again, the condition of looking back is just unacceptable, given that, um, you know, all the other resources we have in town need to focus on, we need to put money into them. So anyway, you cut the pie, we have to put resources and form money back into this infrastructure if it's going to thrive and, and improve. Um, and that's a, that's a conversation that's going to, you know, require some serious discussion about, um, comparative spending, smart spending, seasoned spending, capital improvements and things of that nature. We just can't rearrange the org chart, expect a better product. It's not going to work. We have to put money into the system. So that's where the, that's where the fun starts.
Well, thanks for engaging and, and starting that conversation. I, I coincidentally met with the chair of the rail trail committee today. And of all of the items that we discussed, the most pressing were the concerns over the stormwater run-up and the damage that that's doing to the trails. And, and they are a volunteer committee that is out there trying to maintain this six point seven, um, miles of rail trail that gets hundreds upon hundreds of users each day. So I, I fully support what you're doing. I think you will find the rail trail committee fully supports what you're doing. Um, and I think this is very good. Or is correction change your direction for the town? So thank you again, John.
One other quick item, it's a quick hit. Travis, um, I don't know how many inches of rain have fallen in Holliston the last month or so, but I believe it's quite a lot. Um, and I wanted to let you know, I've been holding my breath the entire time to find out how our, um, dams are holding up across town and whether or not they're under more stress as a result of the burden of Mother Nature over the last several weeks. But, uh, that's an item that obviously we should keep a close eye on and monitor and come up with some kind of solution. I think at one point, we thought about ARPA as a potential solution for that. So hate to wait for an accident or something like that before we focus on it.
Certainly, we are currently engaged, there's a previous discussion we had at the board level, um, on where we are with Leonardo Engineering, was engaged under a previous town meeting. Uh, and, and we're certainly back in compliance, but, you know, the conversations that we had about the future, um, you know, discussion on those. And I will tell you, during the most recent rain, we have had some issues with beavers again. So there's, there's issues that we can control and issues that, uh, we need Mother Nature to cooperate with. But, um, yeah, I will absolutely bring that back on a future agenda as well.
There was an item before us. I don't know if you were interested in us discussing this this evening, but.
The liquor license under other business came in Friday afternoon.
Deal with this time, Tina.
Yeah, please.
So we have a liquor, one-day alcohol beverage license from the alcohol enthusiast, um, due to this is, uh, Crafted. Looking for a wine and beer license for a fun day at the farm, Acadia Farms at two fifty-eight Norfolk Street. Excuse me, on August first, twenty twenty-one, twelve peanut, four peanut.
So the question here is that it didn't come in on time, that it's.
Yeah, we'll just.
Being brought up as other business, but also the point was made that this is not the first, that, that this is the second that we, we're jogging your memory. This is the second one we've received.
I think we've had multiple for this function at a creative farm, um, from Crafted there. I think the only issue, quite honestly, is it, it came in Friday.
Yeah.
Um, afternoon, so generally speaking, if we can get them by midday Thursday before Monday, that's preferable, um, to get it on the agenda. Um, but additionally, yeah, if the board wants to discuss, there's certainly been multiple requests for this function.
I'm fine putting it through. I think we have to recognize though, that if there's a pattern here, people are waiting till the last minute, they're not paying attention. So if you could just kind of, yeah, and know, um, I'm, I'm, I'm making a motion to put this through. It's, it's a fun day at the farm, summertime, we should be engaging in these type of things. But process is process, so I'll make a motion to approve this one day. Um, wine and beer liquor license, August first.
Uh, second up and echo John's comments about just getting that feedback to the Crafted business owner. Um, and so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So another thing under other business.
And I think we got a second other business item that I am not calling at this moment in time.
Okay, can I just do one while you recall that?
No, 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 you said.
Oh, yeah, there's just one other one. Um, I think we've got some questions that have come in, and just because the Holliston reporter will run our summary tomorrow, um, on the smoke that's been found in Holliston. Um, the chief has been taking some calls, is obviously related to, um, events outside of Holliston, well outside of Holliston. Um, and the haze and the smoke is, is related to that. Uh, there is no cause for larynx in Holliston at the moment. I'll say my, my wife was asthma, has not enjoyed it, but, uh, other than that, um, there is, there's nothing else to report through Holliston specifically.
It does make for a stunning sunset.
It's not the way to achieve it, though.
It's, I agree with that. All right, so I believe that is everything that we have for our meeting tonight. There are a couple of sentences there, so I'm just pausing to make sure there's nothing else coming forward. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, Holliston, and we will see you next Monday evening.